Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Lexington Planning Commission meeting. This is our normal monthly meeting. It's being held at Town Hall at 8:00 AM Wednesday morning, March 21st, 2016. This meeting is being broadcast live and a recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information channel several times during the week. I am Frank Berry, the Vice Chair of the Towning Lexington Planning Commission. The other Pl- Planning Commission members present are...
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, Janie Michaels.
Good morning, Ross T. Kaufman.
Good morning, Lisa Gibson.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Fight.
Good morning, I'm John Bartlett.
Good morning, I'm Brooke Wool.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Magnus, Town Council.
Good morning, I'm Ron Williams, Town Council.
And Dan Walton, Parks and Streets. Parks and Sanitation. You have all the responsibility officially.
Randy Edwards, planning and building.
Randy Edwards, transportation director.
Good morning, John Lee, and teacher, directing the planning.
I'm Karen Hender, Assistant Municipal Planner.
At this time, I would ask Commissioner Gibson if she'd lead us in our location.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to be here. We thank you for the changing of the season. We thank you for those that protect us every day and that serve our country and protect us that are away from their families. We pray that you bless them and give them protection. Give us wisdom and guidance today as we plan for our town and for our future. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the prayers, believe.
(Inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I think this is my once, one time a year I get to do this.
I think this is my second time this year.
I'm a little rusty. There we go. You have the minutes in your package. Do I hear a recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Sammy Beadjew.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have no public presentations. Old business. Let's go right into the new business. First order of business, site plan approval for mixed-use plan development located near the intersection of North Lake Drive and Old Cherokee Road. John.
Good morning. Hagan Engineering is requesting approval for a mixed-use project that includes 234 unit, a 234-unit apartment complex and two commercial outparcels. The project encompasses 24.4 total acres with 19 and 1/2 acres for the apartments, 1.8 acres for the outpar- for outparcel number one and three, just over three acres for outparcel two. The project is being pursued as a planned development because conditions related to wetlands and stream buffers on the site make it difficult for the apartments to meet the traditional buffer setback and parking requirements for apartment complex or for an apartment complex. And you'll note in your package, I've provided you this map which shows the stream buffers and the wetlands that are on there. Kind of gives you an idea of what the, what they're dealing with on that, that, from that aspect. The project will be accessed by one primary driveway from North Lake Drive and a secondary driveway through outparcel two ostensibly for residents for service or emergency vehicles. A traffic impact study was not completed by the time when I mailed this to you. It has been completed since that time. But there is no information at this time about the type of commercial projects being planned for the outparcels. Their traffic engineer is here and I'm sure he can update you on what their proposals are. I believe what their proposals are is consistent with what Randy has talked to him about with two decelerating lanes into both of the driveways. The other thing that I think that you all should consider is that requiring the commercial outparcels to utilize the shared driveways with the apartments, which I also believe that is part of the traffic impact study as well. For the project to be approved in its current configuration, the property will need to be annexed with the appropriate zoning classification and a planned unit special overlay. And the developers, Hagan Engineering, property owners are all here to, I believe they have a short presentation this morning on what they're proposing and answer any questions.
Will you please state your name for the record?
Sure will. My name is Brantley White. Good morning. I am the developer for the apartment portion of this proposed project. I'm with Armore Residential out of Greensboro, North Carolina. We are developers and property managers for projects that span through much of North and South Carolina. Proposed multifamily piece of this project is a 234-unit Class A apartment community, hopefully to be called Armore at the Lake. I'm not sure about the slides at this point. Can you get a version, please? This is a slide of the rendering of our building elevation. The planned exterior materials will be hardy siding and brick. If you can go to the next slide, please. The community amenities will include an elite fitness center, a resort-style saltwater pool, a community grilling pavilion, a fully-equipped playground, a complimentary Starbucks coffee bar, a high-tech business center, and free Wi-Fi for our residents. The unit appointments will include granite countertops, stainless-style appliances, nine-foot ceilings, designer cherry cabinets, crown molding, walk-in closets, and garden tubs with top surrounds. We are excited to potentially build and own long-term here in Lexington as well as to contribute substantially to the tax base for the town and the county. If approved, we will build a high-quality project that future residents will be proud to call home. At this point, I'll turn the presentation over to our civil engineer, Barrett Hagan, with Hagan Engineering, and then our traffic engineer, Mike Ridgeway, so we can answer any questions you might have.
Good morning. My name is Barrett Hagan with Hagan Engineering. I did the site plan that you guys have seen. Wanted to touch on a couple things. Can you get the slides back up? We've got a color site plan here, and the purpose of this was to demonstrate the open space that we were going to have on the, on the project. One of the, the things that we were trying to be relieved from is a 150-foot setback. The 150-foot setback would push the project down toward the existing wetlands, and we are trying to get amenities for our, for the residents and a density that will support the amenities. We have left a considerable amount of buffer between us and our back property line, and from that back property line, it is still a good ways away from any other usable land. All of the land in the back there is stream and wetlands. Can you go to the next slide? Okay. The next point that I wanted to raise is parking. We are asking for a reduction in parking spaces required by the ordinance. The ordinance requires 268 spaces, and what I did was I, on the first chart here, I've shown several municipalities in South Carolina and compared our project to what they would require for parking. So you've got the Town of Lexington, Columbia, City of Greensville, Greenville County, Charleston, Mount Pleasant. Lexington and Columbia are the same, but the other, the other municipalities require less parking. And the reason I bring this up is because we've done several projects in North and South Carolina, and I realize that every municipality has their own parking requirements, but I wanted to give you an idea of the amount of parking that we've been providing on recent projects. The first line on the second table shows the number of bedrooms that we've, we've got as 426 and the number of parking that we're providing at 431, which gives us a little bit more than one space per bedroom. Typically, when we're looking this, at this internally, that's usually our max, our ceiling of amount of parking that we provide. And the reason is for market rate apartments, the residents are not on the same work schedules. They're not all at home at the same time. Also, bedrooms are being used by residents that aren't of driving age. So we usually use that ceiling of one space per bedroom and then kind of figure out our market and work down from there. Or we work with the municipality and determine how many parking spaces they require. So as you go through the different projects that Armore, this developer's done recently, you can see that we only have one other project that's in Bluffton, South Carolina that, that has that one-to-one ratio. So we'd like for you to consider this when, when you're looking at the project, a whole, for our request for reduced parking. I think that Mike Ridgeway's here and he can address traffic.
I'm Mike Ridgeway with SRS Engineering here in West Columbia, Lexington County. We did the traffic study. I coordinated with Randy Edwards. One of the things that became apparent early on was that two accesses would be required for the project. The first access aligns with Home Depot, the access drive for Home Depot, which is what we would prefer. We prefer aligned intersections. The second access would occur about 500 feet away between Home Depot and Old Cherokee. We did end up recommending right-turn deceleration lanes at both access drives, even though they're technically not warranted based on DOT standards, but one reason we did that was the commercial component is somewhat unknown, and we thought it would be a good idea to go ahead and have the, the right-turn deceleration lanes now. Another reason for that was we expect a lot of our traffic to be oriented to 378 in Columbia, and so they would make a left out of the site, make a right onto Old Cherokee. Well, we expect a lot of people to come home that way as well, so they would come down Old Cherokee, make a left onto North Lake Drive, and a right to the project. There already is a, a center turn lane within North Lake Drive, and the delays at off-site intersections were, were fairly minimal for build conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have specific.
All right. One question.
You just made a statement about traffic coming home, coming down Old Cherokee, turning to the left there.
Yes.
That would probably require getting a left turn signal there, wouldn't it?
We did not, that's a fairly small movement today. There's not a lot of people that come down Old Cherokee. We did not recommend that in the study. Most of the traffic that comes down Old Cherokee either makes a right towards the dam or goes straight across, but there's not a whole lot of left turns back towards Lexington.
But when the apartment's going there, there's going to be a lot more traffic.
It certainly will increase, and I can give you those numbers. Currently, there's 82 that make that movement today, and then in the future, we will add 43 to that in the afternoon. So that's certainly something that could be considered, and that's a pretty easy fix, but the study did not identify that as a, a need.
One question we had also is the decelerating lane at the second entrance about 500 feet away.
Yeah.
And that existing driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Have you taken that into consideration? How does it going to impact?
I have, I have not looked at the specifics of that. It's a, it's a residential driveway, and in a very minor driveway, and typically those can be worked out. I mean, our deceleration lane will be 100 feet with 180-foot taper, but I've not looked at exactly how that would fall with that other driveway.
Now you said a reduction in parking spaces. John, what is currently required and what are they asking to reduce to?
Because I'll be honest, I couldn't see that slide very well with the parking. I don't know if you have any handouts of that?
The, rather than looking it up, I want to make sure I put it to you correctly. They're required to provide two spaces for one- and two-bedroom units and three spaces for three-bedroom units. So there are 234 units. That would be 498 spaces that they would be required to, based on the breakdown that they've submitted to the plan.
And how many are shown on the plan?
445.
445.
Asking for 45.
That's what you got right there, total parking provided, 445.
So it is 445 is what?
On the plan. Do you mind? Yeah.
I can hand it up. This is kind of just a fancy version.
Okay, yeah. That's okay. I just couldn't, I couldn't see it there on the slide very well.
Just for my reference. It shows the amount of bedrooms and then our parking excluding the garages, and then our ratio of parking per bedroom, and it's comparing to various other projects. We can also give you the municipalities and what their different apartments are.
Let me get Dan to make this.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Sure. All right. Thank you, guys.
He's going to mic some coffee for us real quick.
Do we have any?
Question on the, on the site plan, the connectivity of the two parcels that I'm seeing here that's part of the PUD. How about the connectivity to the lower area down, the other piece of property down on the corner of Cherokee and North Lake Drive?
There's actually a stream between us and that piece of property, and so we've stopped our development at that edge of that stream. So to get to that from internally would require a string crossing.
So there's no intentions to connect those three properties at all to this property?
No, sir.
What about the connectivity of the three parcels that are not currently included in the PUD?
Well, I mean, I think that that's an issue for that landowner down the road, but I think it would make total sense for the secondary entrance to also access their property, but that's something that we haven't addressed with them because we're just not involved with them in the purchase of this property.
So you're not purchasing those three parcels with the house?
We are not.
Well, they, they not, the PUD's not in these other parcels.
But we're, I think further back, you're asking us to annex those three pieces of property at this time, correct?
Yeah, so if you want to pull up the site plan.
We're not annexing, we're not asking to annex these three.
Right. If we can look at the site plan.
I've got a larger plan here that we can look at.
So the two dark green outparcels we are asking to be annexed at this time, the one that's slightly north of that, which I think is the one you were referring to, is not part of the annexation. If that's what you're asking, I might have misunderstood.
Yeah, that's a question. I, I like everything about the, the site plan. I see where, and you include the two commercial pieces to be part of the PUD, for it to be a PUD. I, I think our only question is, and we like the deceleration lane, we like the parking, we like everything about the whole project. Our question is the, the other parcels that aren't in your design, and I know the owner's here, maybe he can answer this later, but, today, but, you know, it would be good if we could see a master site plan for the whole works on what's going to happen from a, from a traffic flow and in connectivity, and it ju- it just makes sense to know what's going to happen. You don't have to know what's going to be built there or anything, just know the parcels, how they're going to be inclusive to the rest of the property.
Sure. I mean, we can certainly, you know, talk to them about getting more information for what they would envision there. It's just not part of what we're, you know, proposing with our site plan.
Right.
As far as our piece of the project. I mean, if you're talking about access points, I don't think that's a, I mean, to me, that would be something we could, could resolve pretty easily, showing where the access to those outparcels would be off of our entrances. But as far as what they're going to actually put there, that's undetermined at this point.
Right. And that's, and we understand that.
Yeah.
What we're looking for is the connectivity.
Right.
So there's not additional requests for curb cuts onto.
Right.
Highway six.
And I think that is the intention. So if we need to, we need to discuss that further and present something else, I think we can do.
That's what we would like to see.
Okay.
I think, I want to say something. That was one of our recommendations in, in the traffic study, was that, you know, these be used for any further development along that corridor so that we don't have someone coming in wanting another access on Highway six.
I can't speak for the rest of the group, but I, I think most of us like everything you have here. I think we would just like to see a, a master plan of, of the connectivity, like, like you said, you had included in the traffic study and so forth, and just wondered if we could ask you to bring that back and then let us, let us prove it. I, I think that's, we're more concerned about for the, for, I guess, really and truly, it's, it's for the basics of the traffic on curb cuts and for the owner's protection too, for whatever he wants to build in these other areas to be able to, to connect.
Yes.
Good morning. I'm Tom Wayne Dirda, representing the owners. The owner is 86 years old tomorrow, that's my mother, and she has a partner that has Alzheimer's and wants to get this project done too, but as far as that piece below the, down near the intersection of Old Cherokee and Number Six, they, it was only a four-and-a-half acre usable parcel before they, and they have put in their retention pond down there now, and it's, it's really a very small piece of property that's usable at this stage. There's only 50 feet that's usable on Old Cherokee going out toward the rest of them. So really, I think that's only good for signage at this stage, and it widens out as you go up, it makes it usable, but there's certainly going to have to be an entrance on the bottom of one driveway, but I don't anticipate there being more than one business down there, so.
Like?
I don't know what three parcels really you're talking about. There's a parcel behind it that's across the creek.
Put, put that back up, please. Can you put the map back up? Is the, is the parcels, the three parcels just above the second entrance into the complex here, above the dark green?
Can I bring this up?
Yeah.
Referring to easier?
Yes. With the connectivity. We would like to see this includes in your PUD and access to this.
Because we've got a string here. We're more concerned. Please.
This is not in, we are thinking about what's not.
What I would suggest here.
Yeah. You got it, Charles.
Sorry.
All right. So he stated that that is not owned by Winger.
By the family. Can you restate what you just said, please, sir, for the record?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The three parcels that are to the north of the colored-out parcels that were shown on the slide are not controlled by the seller.
Okay. We should all, we should all willing to, in the traffic study?
But we, we would be willing to stub an entrance off of that drive to those parcels in the event that they come before you develop and they could use our access.
Okay. All right. Any further questions?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the plan with the intentions of the stubbing of that one piece of property, just for them to have access.
About here.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Did you follow the votes? Any chance? And we did get the zoning correct in your statement, correct? The overlay?
We haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay. Be sorry. I might have my head on myself. All right. Item number two.
That would be the four par- the next four parcels that you're going to address on your agenda are the parcels associated with this project for annexation. So that's where the zoning.
Got it.
The largest one is PLCW Trust, which owns 58.7 acres and at the intersection of North Lake Drive and Old Cherokee, and they've petitioned to annex 55.8 acres. There's a small section of 2.9 acres that's south of this location that has the same tax map number. That's where the discrepancy is. I think Mr. Kaufman asked about that last time. This is one of the four parcels included in the project we've been discussing. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential, high-density residential, general commercial, and limited commercial. North Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road, and Old Cherokee is classified as collector road. Due to the intended use of the property, the recommended zoning is to split-zone it with a combination of high-density residential, general commercial, and limited commercial classifications as shown on the attached exhibit, which would be this one. A portion of the property would also need a planned unit special overlay for the project to move forward as it's been submitted. The recommended classification for North Lake Drive is an arterial, and the recommended classification for Old Cherokee Road is a collector. The map that I've submitted in your packet, the bright yellow is protected residential. That's on the other side of the creek, up against the neighborhood. The darker yellow is the high-density residential where the apartment will go. The dark red here is the general commercial, and then down here on the Old Cherokee side would be limited commercial. Is what we're proposing with, with the planned unit overlay encompassing those parcels that are part of this property. And that would be consistent with this one and the other three annexations that we'll discuss.
All right. Any questions?
I have one. I believe we discussed last night that the 2.9 acres being separated from this was on the same tax map number.
That is correct.
And who, who has the responsibility of separating that, getting its own number? You said last night.
The property owner, the property owner has, has told me that they are going to get a different tax map number for that 2.89 acres, but when we're, when the town attorney's drafting the annexation petitions, he goes by a tax map number and deed information associated with that tax map number.
Right, right.
So there's, that's why there's discrepancies.
Yeah, I, I want, I would like to make sure that the, what we're bringing in is, is the same as the tax map number, so whoever's got the responsibility, you've got another month to work on it.
Well, the annexation is based on the deed information. And that 2.9 acres that we're talking about is separately delineated in the deed information, although it's under the same tax map number.
Yeah. It's already separated.
So that piece, just as Ross said, that piece of property will have to come back to us if they ever do anything. They are not included in this today.
It is not included in the annexation. If you, you can kind of.
I see that it's wide out there.
You can kind of see it on this map here. This is the 2.9 acres. It's just recorded as a separate, under the same tax map number as this large parcel here.
Okay. Deed separate.
It is delineated separately on the same deed.
Yeah. I move the recommendation of zoning.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please use your hands. Item number three.
Georgia Burger-Winger owns two acres associated with this, four parcels for the apartment complex and the commercial out parcels. Again, properties are zone general commercial. North Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road, and the recommendation is general commercial for this one, as shown on that exhibit with the planned unit overlay.
Okay. Any questions?
I move the recommendations, recommendations zoning.
We have a motion or a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please use your hands. Item number four.
This will be the third of the four parcels associated with this project. It is 0.93 acres. Again, the zoning in the area is essentially the same, and the recommendation is to zone it per the exhibit that's attached to your packet.
All right.
Questions?
Questions? Any more motion?
Motion to approve recommendation on zoning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, please use your hands. Item number four.
Five.
Five.
This is the final piece in the four parcel puzzle. It's owned by Winger Family Properties. It's 0.56 acres. Again, the zoning is essentially the same in the area. North Lake Drive is an arterial, physical collector, and the recommended zoning for this is as shown on the exhibit, general commercial, limited commercial, high-density residential with a planned overlay, planned development overlay.
Any questions? Any recommendation?
I move for approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please use your hands. Thank you very much. Item number six.
This one does not have anything to do with the apartment complex. Extreme Holdings LLC recently purchased 6.2 acres located in 300 block of Porsche Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. A towing and automotive repair business is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial, and Porsche Drive is classified as a local road. And the, due to surrounding conditions and the intended use, the same zoning and road classification is recommended for this property.
I have a question.
Yes.
Screening, proper screening for this facility will be more for landscaping?
It's an industrial area.
It will have some, but industrial areas are.
Landscaping will be up front, street front. Okay. All right. Any further questions? Any more motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a second. Any further questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please use your hands. Thank you very much. That concludes all of our new business. Ms. Mannas, good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see all of you.
Would you like to say a few things?
Well, we've got a couple of things going on. First, thank you for everything that y'all do. And I look forward to seeing all of you on October the 6th for the Boards and Commissions Dinner. I hope you got your invitation. So also, the Lexington County Fire Service is hosting a Fallin Fireman 5K on October the 1st at 8:00 a.m. You can get information from fallinfireman5k.com. We're excited for the ribbon cutting for the Ice House Amphitheater. It's going to be on Tuesday, October the 11th at 10:00 a.m. So I hope you can join us for that Tuesday, October the 11th at 10:00 a.m. for the ribbon cutting. And then on Saturday, October 15th, the Lexington Craft Beer Fest is going to be held at Ice House. So the two activities that'll be happening pretty soon at our amphitheater. Also, the town's first concert, the Downtown Jams, is October 27th from 6:00 to 9:00. It's a family-friendly concert that's free with the Root Doctors at our amphitheater. So please put those dates down and join us. And then on October the 25th, everyone always has a great time at the Police Department's Fall Fest. So I hope you'll join us here at the municipal complex for the Police Department's Fall Fest. So thank you.
Mr. Williams, good to see you. Anything you'd like to add?
That's it. Just trying to cover it all.
Just kind of hand you everything, like, good to see you.
Just, we'll be bringing you some suggested provisions that the temporary sign ordinance based on a Supreme Court ruling that, as we discussed tonight. Got some good input from you guys and have a good idea in what direction to go, and we'll give you something you can work with.
Good. Anybody else? All right. Any public comments? I don't think we have any. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
To move?
Second.
All right. We have a motion for adjournment of first and second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Yep.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for watching the Town of Lexington Plan and Commission Action. This meeting was held at Town Hall at 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, September 1st, 21st, 2016. Recording this meeting will be aired several times this week on the Town's Information Channel. I'm Frank Berry, your Vice Chairman, on behalf of the Town of Lexington Plan and Commission and Staff, I wish you a good day.